Good afternoon, board members. It's 4:30, so it's time to begin our meeting. We do have a quorum. All of our board members are present, and so I call this meeting of the Granville County Board of Education for a work session to order. I'd like to ask Ms. LaBrecque if you'll offer our invocation.
Yes. Bauer, ahead. Gracious God, we thank you for health and well-being, as well as this opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we keep what is best for the students and of this community at the forefront of our thoughts and actions. Please help us to have clear and open minds as we strive to move forward in this difficult and complicated work with which we are tasked. This we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Williams, will you offer our pledge of allegiance?
Everybody will stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much again for being here this afternoon. Today is a time for us to have discussion related around consolidation. This is culminating some of the work that we've done over the past two years. This comes after our public hearing that was at South Granville the other night, board members that were there, present to hear those comments by the public. And so originally, I had asked the staff to be prepared to share a timeline on how the consolidation would go, now that we had made that motion and moved forward. But what I would like to do, with the board's permission, I would like a point of personal privilege. I'd like to ask our vice chairman if he can take over for my position for just a few moments.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to offer a motion, and that motion being this, and if I have a second, I would like to speak to it. I would like to rescind the motion from November 1st for the closure of Granville Central High School and the movement of South Granville High School to that location and the movement of Holly.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Williams. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak to that.
Okay.
Originally, I was the one that made the motion for us to move forward with that closure. And after listening and hearing the community over the past several weeks, not just Tuesday night, but through countless emails that I have read, everyone that has been sent to the board, and that through the time of us discussing within ourselves and then hearing from our community, I just want the community to know that we listened to them and that we heard that the community was not behind this solution. They wanted us to go back to the drawing board. And so at this time, what I would like to ask, that if this motion passes, that we as a board commit to the fact of that we would move forward to figure out a solution for our community, knowing the challenges that we need to face with our budget, with our schools that are not at capacity, but also with the fact that we still need to keep children at the forefront, and that we still need to honor the wishes of our community as elected officials, but also with the fact of making sure that as we make these changes, that we really take a hard look at, again, why we're doing what we're doing, how we accomplish that goal, and what it will do to affect the future of Granville County Public Schools. And so with that, I would like to add my support that we move forward with this, with the thoughts of after, if this passes, that we as a board look at a plan in how that can be workable. I know that there has been a plan that Ms. LaBrecque has shared with us, that she's worked on, that kind of came out of some of our earlier conversations, and I would be very open for us utilizing that as a skeleton to be able to make some decisions and work as a team to come out of here today with at least some sort of guiding plan on how we would do this.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments? Anyone?
I would just like to add little, and to Mr. Richardson, thank you so much for that motion, and it has been seconded. And the things that you just mentioned, you know, it's definitely top-notch with me. You know, I have been definitely reviewing in my conscience and the mind of everything of the 39 speakers we heard the other night. I made a comment for each and every one, so if you want to check my paper, I have 39 comments there. But more importantly, things that I heard repeated by the different presenters. You know, this is a tough decision. I'm just rolling in on my first year on this board, but you all have been rolling with this for the last five or 10 years. And, you know, we're still out there, but we still, and what you said over and over again, that we have to put the best interests of our students first. Now, you know, I don't want to say, when we say the students, we mean the students, from K through 12, the students, from District 1 to District 5, District whatever, the students. I don't want to, you know, the parents, you know, you have parents say, you know, my child, my child, my child, and we know that still, the students, everyone, everyone, I'm on the Equity Task Force, everyone. So as we rethink this again, we need to do it positively. And yes, I know about the plan, I, you know, but I'm not going to take up that much time. But we're here to do the right thing. But I say we have all the stakeholders at the table, and I don't mean just BOC, BOE, a principal, a peer there, the stakeholders, parents, grandparents, you spoke, you told us what you felt about your community. And all I ask is parents, grandparents, everyone, all stakeholders, let's come to the table. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Could I just say one small thing?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I appreciate Mr. Richardson rescinding his motion. I think it's going to be better for the community at large that he did that. And of course, we need to put that behind us and think about moving forward, and think about doing it in some kind of a timely fashion. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Ms. Williams?
I was really struck by what Mr. Moss said, Daryl Moss, about finding a new way, and also that our children are not just an expense, they are an investment in our future, in their future. So thank you for the motion, Mr. Richardson.
I would also like to say thank you for that motion, Mr. Richardson, and also like to thank all the citizens who sent emails and made phone calls and actually offered some well-thought-out solutions and ideas that they offered us to say, have you thought of trying it this way? Or we would be open to trying it this way. So I really appreciate that. That makes a huge difference as you're trying to think through this. So I thank those out there who are listening who sent in those positive solutions.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote?
Can I make one more statement before you vote?
You may.
Sorry. I just, I thank all of our board members for their comments. One thing I need to say directly to us and the public is now that we have had this wake-up call, it is time to come to the table, awake and alert, to be able to make decisions. One thing I realized in this is nobody cares until it affects them. Well, this has affected all of us the entire time, and we just kind of slept through it. And so as a community, as a Board of Education, as our Board of Commissioners, this is not something that now we vote on and we're done with. As Mr. P. said, there needs to be a workable plan in the near future because we have children in front of us right now that we're educating. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Can you read the motion again?
The motion to rescind your motion made on November 1st.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson, if I could say one thing?
Yes, sir.
The thing that struck me through all of this with South Granville was, is we have a lot more support for our schools than sometimes we think. And we need to ask those people who turned out to our session to be willing to fight with us as we work on our funding and that kind of thing. If the Commissioners were heart of what happened the other night around funding, I think we could make some real progress. The way we're doing it now is not going to change anything because they see it all the way. So bottom line is, thank goodness, there's that level of support. But show up when we need you in the spring. Thank you.
All right. All right, board members. So at this point now, begins the hard work. And so we need to go ahead and discuss kind of the framework or the options. Ms. LaBrecque, I believe you have something you'd like to present tonight?
Yes, I do. So if we want to pull up, thank you. So what I've come up with, I've gone back over through a lot of our discussions, different proposals that have been thrown out, and kind of come up with what I think would be a very good temporary solution, and I use the word temporary in big, bold letters, because there are a lot of things happening in our community that we just simply don't know where we're going to end up at the end of it all. Right? We have saguassa that we have to deal with, and that is supposedly coming to a head in about three years or so. We also have apple that is coming, and whether people want to realize it or not, that is going to impact us. And then we also, you know, have the East End Connector that will be completed in the spring of 2021, 22, excuse me. So those are three very large items that are going to be impacting us directly. And so with that, I want to offer up this temporary solution. So if we can go to the next slide. Great. So in the elementary realm, I would like, I think it would be smart for us to move the sixth graders into all of the elementary schools across the entire county, that's Northern and Southern End. And what that does is that helps to alleviate some of our capacity issues that we have been concerned about. And then we would also then obviously talk about intramural sports and something to accommodate those sixth graders who have been accustomed to being able to have sports at their access. And with us rolling K-6 throughout the entire community, we would be able to, you know, have sixth grade sports amongst even just our county, which would be special. So then it takes us to middle school. And with all of the sixth graders in the elementary schools, that means that we have Butner-Stem Middle and G.C. Holly Middle, specifically down here in the Southern End, with the ability to move just those seventh and eighth graders into Butner-Stem Middle School. And again, I am aware that this will be a long trek for people who live where I live, all the way in the southeastern corner, but this is just something temporary until we can figure out. Because my biggest concern with our middle school piece is that we have been talking about where to put a middle school. We've been talking about putting it, you know, there have been people that have talked about putting it at Creedmore Elementary. There are people that have talked about putting it at Tar River area. And what we simply don't know in the next three to five years, we know that growth is coming, but we don't know exactly where that is going to be. That could be on the Western End, that could be on the Eastern End, that could be somewhere just completely all across the Southern End. We really just have no idea. And to put all of our apples in one location seems a little, you know, putting the cart before the horse, if you will. So with putting the seventh and eighth graders in G.C. Holly into Butner-Stem Middle School, we do also continue to have room for some growth as well. And then that takes us into our high school aspect. And so what I am proposing here is that we leave the three high schools intact, and we make Granville Central High School an enrichment hub. And what I mean by that is that we can take courses that would be difficult to offer to all three schools separately, not necessarily CTEs. CTEs can remain in the locations that they are currently, which is why we have a school choice program, right? But other things that maybe aren't available, other electives, advanced courses, that kind of thing. And what we can do is potentially shuttle or use a video conferencing equipment platform to be able to allow students that are at all three high schools to come together either virtually or physically and take these courses so that we aren't having to have a whole bunch of teachers that are only teaching to one or two students. So that is that piece. And then if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide. Great. So with that, what I have come up with then is also establishing a plan. Something that we heard about a lot from our community this week is that they are concerned that we come up with things and ideas, which are all wonderful, but what does that look like long-term? So here we have, in three to five years, we can evaluate the growth in the county. At that time, after the three to five-year timeframe, and as things continue to grow, we can adjust that as well, this timeline, but just to give a bullet point. If sufficient growth has not occurred, which means that schools remain at their current capacity, we have experienced no growth, you know, everything is still operating, you know, where they currently are, we can at that point choose to consolidate to two high schools and move G.C. Holly to the third high school campus, or we can choose another viable alternative at that time. However, if sufficient growth has occurred, meaning that high school enrollments are too large to consolidate into two high schools, and Butner-Stem Middle School is also needing expansion in the seventh and eighth grades, then we have a various number of options to choose from. First of all, we could choose to build a new middle school on the land owned next to Tar River Elementary School if we deem that growth has occurred on that part of the county. Or we can also choose to build a new middle school on G.C. Holly land, you know, if we feel that that location is a better alternative. Or we can also choose to convert another elementary school to the middle school if capacity allows. And also bearing in mind that construction does typically take about two to three years. So, you know, then that pushes us into about the five-year time. So now, in five years, I wanted to discuss about how we can use the G.C. Holly land. And so some things that we had discussed previously, if we decided not to build a new middle school on the G.C. Holly land, we could create a pre-K center there, which that would be a location in the Southern Center on the G.C. Holly campus, but also bearing in mind that pre-K center would be a very, very viable option for the Northern End of the county. And so coming up with another alternative, like another location for that also in the Northern End, I think would be very beneficial. The other thing we can do with the Holly land is we can also create housing for teachers to help with retention and recruitment. And so this one could be in the G.C. Holly campus, and then also another location to create an equivalent in the Northern End, again, keeping all of that equity in mind. And then looking into updating and upgrading sporting facilities on the G.C. Holly campus for community use and rental. This is one area where I feel like the southern part of the county is really lacking in comparison to the Northern End. We really don't have much in the way of parks, recreational soccer fields, tennis courts, any of that stuff for kids down in this end. And unfortunately, students are forced to, you know, who live down here, are forced to have to go and defer to Franklin and Wake Counties for their sporting things. And that's really hard, especially, you know, whenever you live in Granville and you want to support Granville, and then you can't, you just can't do it in the ways you'd like to. All right. So then, moving out to a 10-year plan, making the best use of what we have. So if Creedmore Elementary, I'm just throwing this out there because it was discussed many times over the past couple of weeks, if Creedmore Elementary was closed and used to, we could use that because another thing that we had discussed for using Granville Central's campus is because of the land and because of the amount of space available. But being that Creedmore Elementary is located where it is, and there is that greenway in between the two, we could use that land to continue to expand South Granville's sporting athletics and that sort of thing. But the other thing too, to take into consideration, some ideas that were really kind of interesting and something that would be kind of fun to dream about, would be, what if, because South Granville is so well-known for their arts, what if we decided to build a performing arts center where Creedmore Elementary currently exists? And we can use that art program for our own personal use, for district-wide use, for rental within the community. I mean, it's really cool. So the other thing then is, if, we have several then options, again, with Creedmore, or for unused buildings in general. So a fire department, if you decide that you needed to demolish a building, you can go to, just as an example, not that I'm saying we need to do that, but if you were to go that route, you can go to your fire department and say, hey, would you be willing to use this as a training exercise? And you can burn down the building. So that's something that we can use to benefit, again, the community. However, the other thing that I thought would be really interesting is, you know, what if we were to use some of our unused buildings, for example, while we're not necessarily using the buildings on Holly land, and we don't really know what to do with them as of yet, offering them up to our law enforcement and allowing them to use those as training facilities for SROs in case of school emergencies and drills and that sort of thing. And then the other thing that we really need to do is we need to team up with our county commissioners going forward and come up with an enhancement plan for all of our campuses across the entire district. Because why have we gotten into this situation? And, you know, it's because there hasn't been, I don't think, a very necessarily good relationship between the two boards, and I think we really need to work on that. So it would be very beneficial for us to be able to work with them and say, okay, these are the schools that we feel really need a facelift. What is your timeline? Where can we come to a middle ground to really make sure that we don't end up in this position with any of our schools, again, in the future, feeling like we're having to put a ton of money all at once. And then the last thing that I thought would be really interesting is if we took our media centers, which seem somewhat underutilized, and put in mini museums. And by that, I mean, we have a very rich history of schools, of community, and Holly being one, Joe Toller, I mean, there are just such amazing things, and historical, and Mary Potter as well, such amazing histories about these schools. And I think it would be really great to be able to put that into our media centers so that the kids that are attending schools can go and see that information for themselves and be able to use that as just learning experiences. I mean, you know, you revel in where you came from, right? So, and we learned a lot about that through South Granville High School, and listening to all those families. Okay. So that being said, what is required in order to make this plan move forward? So ironically, there has not been an official closure study just done on G.C. Holly Middle School, which means that we would need to take action on just doing that, which would push our timeline out approximately one month, right? Because that seems to be about how long it takes for us to get a closure study together, public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. And then one other thing that I just wanted to kind of drive some of the points home that I've made is I actually came up with an Apple Impact Comparison Chart, and this I came up with this morning, so you guys actually haven't had a chance to see this yet. But we've been hearing a lot about Apple is coming to Raleigh, Apple's coming to Raleigh, and we don't really know, you know, we live 26-ish miles away from where that campus is going to be located. How much are we actually going to be impacted by that? And there are a lot of people that speculate we're not going to be impacted, and there are people that think, oh, my gosh, it's going to be so much. So what I've done is I've actually found and did a little research around Austin, Texas. Liberty Hill, Texas, is located 23 miles outside of the Apple Incorporated facility in Austin. And so there on the left, you can see Creedmore, North Carolina, and it goes through their demographics. The interesting thing that I would like to point out is that in the very center picture, underneath Liberty Hill, Texas, in 2015, that is when it was informed, the public was informed that Apple was coming to Austin. And at that point, in that year, they had 32% growth, okay? And they have continued to see growth every single year since, where prior to that, they were lucky if they saw maybe 2%, except for one random year. All right. So that actually ends up being growth since 2010, so about 10 years. That's been 308% of growth. Okay. So the other thing that I want to point out then is that, that's great, we're seeing that kind of growth, but what does that really mean for us as a school district? I mean, those could be older communities for all we know. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to pull up what the age demographic was back in 2014. However, if you look at our median age charts, on the left-hand side by Creedmore, you'll notice the male and female. In the first, in the pink and the blue bars, the first one is zero to five, all the way at the bottom of the, there you go. That is the zero to five age range. So then we have the next three bars up, that is five to the age So then we have five, the next three bars up, that is five to the ages of 18. So those are all school-aged children. And so you can see there, in both the male and female, that is about 15% of Creedmore's population. Now, I've just used Creedmore City as an example because I felt like that was comparing apples to apples. But if you go over to Liberty Hill population, we can see that regardless of when this was, now, at this point in time, their age, school-aged children, it's actually 25% of their population. So I feel like regardless of what kind of population increase we're going to see, it's probably going to be about a 10% increase at least in our school-aged children. So anyway, so those are just some interesting things that I really wanted to point out that we could potentially be looking at, which is why I feel like this temporary approach is really something that we need to go with, so that we don't find ourselves five years down the road going, geez, we really didn't have that information that we needed at the time we made, made concrete decisions, and now we have to backtrack. So, that concludes my study.
Thank you, Ms. LeBreck.
Yes.
Definitely informed study. At this point, board members, do, I want some direction from you. Do you want to discuss this and make a motion from, or make some direction from that? Or are you ready to put something on the floor?
I mean, if nobody else wants to discuss anything, I, I would be willing to make a motion that we proceed with the closure study of Holly with the intent to move forward with our temporary solution.
Yes, dear, Ms. LeBreck, I want to make sure I fully understand exactly, and by the way, thank you so much for this because this is a starting point, okay? It definitely is a starting point for us to start laying out a plan of action to get us from A to B to where we need to get to. So this is great, I really appreciate you doing that for us. Now, your last slide that says a study, a closure of C G Holly is in, in respect of, and I know we looked at Holly before, but I guess we didn't, when you say a closure of it, what do you mean as far as?
So right now, what we've done, all of our closure studies have been surrounding Holly and really moving it to another campus. And so what this does is this is actually a full-on closure of G C Holly. Not to say that five years down the road, we may open a new middle school and decide to name it G C Holly Middle School if the growth occurs that, like, we think it may. But this is just a closure study of G C Holly Middle School, moving those students and actually closing the campus to move forward.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It has to do with the idea of closure rather than moving kids from one school to another. Because if we decide to move the students from G C Holly to another school and possibly name it G C Holly, I don't know that, but is that, does that mean the same thing as closure?
So, that's a good question. I see you looking to me.
Attorney, can you speak to your mic?
I think the answer is yes, in, so as she said previously, you studied moving Holly, which I wouldn't see as a closure because you, at the end, you have the same number of middle schools you started with. But in this plan, you're going to have one less middle school than you started with. And so that is a closure of Holly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we need to decide what we're going to do with the plan.
It doesn't, I will say, it doesn't mean anything about what happens to the name Holly. You can rename any of your buildings at any time.
So I have a question, and maybe this is for executive staff. Can you pause a school?
Like, have a school but leave it empty?
Yeah, because we, we are saying this is a temporary possibility that we're just moving those students over to another school?
That's a new one for me, and so the answer is, I, I don't know. I suppose we could look into what the implications would be of having a school number that's empty, and whether that's a thing that you can do. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we know that to be assigned a school number, you need 100 students. And so I've never looked into whether you would lose your school number if you didn't have 100 students. Dr. McLean's looking at me, do you know?
I just know you have to have 100 students to have that school number.
Right.
If you go below that, you lose your school number.
Right.
Yeah, so then, I, I would say then, no, then we couldn't do that.
We, we can certainly look into it, but I think we should proceed, if, if you want to proceed with some speed, you should go ahead and proceed with a study, and then if you find you don't want to do that, you don't have to do it.
Did that answer your question?
Kind of.
Okay.
Because, well, the reason I say that is because I have several questions about Ms. LeBreck's, uh, plan or layout. And number one, I, I tried to figure out how many sixth graders we have, that I couldn't find anywhere that said, you know, because we're talking about taking all of the sixth graders out of schools and putting them into elementarys, and, you know, and I was left trying to figure out or find how many, you know, seventh, eighth graders that were leaving Holly for the first, in the first place. And how is this going to affect the southern as well as the northern area schools? That I, I'm still, I mean, I don't know the answer to that. And I think, from my, I, I need to understand that, I know the answers to that, in order to move to the next step where her plan talks about combining Holly and Butler-Stem.
So let me ask a clarifying question.
I have, I have those numbers, actually, if you want them.
Hold on one second. So if the motion that you were about to make, which I, I don't think you made it yet, was just the closure study, can we get that going concurrently to give staff? I would dare say it might be two months because of the holidays? Get them rolling on that, and then, I, I don't know if your intention is to make a motion for the rest of this tonight, or if that's coming later? Because I think if it's coming later, then we might can get some more answers to that.
Okay, well, let's deal with that part of it, because I'm still not sure whether we are going to close it or move it.
I got you, okay.
And if that makes a difference, I don't know. I didn't get a satisfactory answer from all.
Well, Ms., Ms. Chair, is waiting to do that study stopping us from making some decisions about the K six, seven, eight, nine, 12 layout that is, has been presented?
My opinion would be is you probably would need the study done in order to get information to make informed decisions about that, but I'm not, is, is, was that your intention, or?
I don't, I don't understand your question. Say that again.
So he was asking, do, ask your question again.
My question was, we've had some discussions about specific things, but does that discussion preclude us going ahead and making a decision so the community?
Of which steps to move forward, I mean, basically?
Preclude, I lost my thought, preclude us from saying, this is what we propose to do beginning next year, or in the case of the enrichment, depending upon when that would be, but K six, seven, eight as it's laid out, and the enrichment hub, and let people, and, and vote on it up or down, and so people will know where we are in the process.
Well, I think you would have to, if you're doing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade changes, you would have to do your Holly closure study first.
Yeah, so if the question is, can we move sixth graders out of Holly without closing it, the answer is yes. But if you're moving all the students out of Holly, I would not do that without doing a closure study.
And when would that, wait, when would that study have to be done?
Well, we, we could ask for it.
Before you decide to do it.
Yeah, so if we, if we.
Does that make sense?
We've done that before.
So you could do it piecemeal. You could say, okay, today, we just want to move sixth graders. I think that you could do that today. But to say we're going to adopt the whole plan without further study, I, I would not recommend.
All right, then I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the K six proposal as presented, and the high school proposal as presented, and we'll address the middle school issue once we've had our study completed.
May I ask a question? Because when we, I was waiting to, when we move to the high schools, as to whether we need a study of Granville Central, because?
Granville Central's not closing.
Well, so the reason I say that is because are there going to be students who are full-time at Granville Central?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So that school's remaining open, just it's being enhanced?
Enhanced, correct, okay.
My question that was asked a little while ago that had to do with the number of sixth graders, never got answered.
Yes, so the current sixth graders at G C Holly are 190, and the current sixth graders at Butler-Stem Middle School are 135. And if you take, and then the seventh graders is 154 at Holly and 148 at Butler-Stem. So if you take the sixth and seventh grades and were moved, to move them up to seventh and eighth next year, the total enrollment number is 627. The optimal capacity at Butler-Stem Middle School is 722, which leaves us with 95 available capacity at Butler-Stem Middle School. You're welcome.
I looked at it, too, and when I looked at the following year to see if it was going to go way up, it went down slightly, but that was with no retentions and no additional people moving in. So it looks like it would stay fairly stable.
Ms. Chair, did, did my motion get a second?
No.
No.
No, nobody's motion's got a second.
Yeah, y'all keep jumping in, in front of each other, I'm sorry. All right, so Mr. Peace has got his answer to his number. Are you, are you good with that number answer? Any more clarity you need with that?
No, I'm good with the, the number.
Okay, all right, so Dr. Houlihan, your motion is to move forward with the K six makeup across the county, and the enhancement of Granville Central High School as presented in the plan.
And I think I'm allowed to speak first.
We need to get a second.
Yeah, are we?
Didn't we get one?
Not yet.
Oh, we didn't.
All right, do we have a second for that?
I, I have a question before we do, do that.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the enhancement plan.
Okay.
That you.
All right, can, can we do this? Can we get a second first to make sure it's going to go that way, and then ask your question? Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, okay, now ask away.
I just need an explanation as to the, I guess you're talking about the 912 enhancement plan that's in your plan, right? And I, I mean, I read it, but the questions that occurred to me had to do with staffing and classes. You can offer, we can offer all the classes that we want to, and the advanced courses divisional, but unless we have enough students enrolled for that to happen, I mean, it's happened in the past where we would offer classes, but you'd have five, six, or four kids and couldn't afford to offer the class. So I'm just, my concern is, if we do this, how different it is from what we actually do now? Kids have an opportunity to pretty much to go whatever school they want to go to.
So if I, can I jump in? And answer, answer that bit, okay, never mind.
Please. The, the only other thing that I see different from this is there's a place that offers buses, buses to transport students from one place to another, and I just don't want to get ahead of the administration that has to put their, whatever plan we come up with into action. And I think, you, you know, I don't see anything wrong with the plan, it's just that having a plan that you can't implement is not a plan. And I think we need to think about that.
I think we'll have to implement it as a gradual basis.
Okay, Ms. LeBreck, can you?
So I just wanted to, yeah, I wanted to speak to that a little bit. So the issue that we have right now is we have three separate schools that offer all different classes, and students don't get a chance to combine, right? So they stay at their school through the day, and that's the end of it. So I think what I'm thinking is, with the Granville Central enrichment hub, we have courses that are offered to all, like, so students at all three schools would be able to come together. So it's not like we have one advanced English at South Granville, we have one advanced English at, and I'm just using this as an example, but if we had advanced English and we had three students that took it at South Granville, and we had two students that took it at Granville Central, and we had five that took it at, at Webb, instead of having three advanced English teachers, or whatever class I just said, you've got one teacher teaching 10 students at one school, instead of three teachers teaching a handful, or like, less than a handful at three different schools.
Well, the, the three teachers, the three, they wouldn't be teaching it. If there weren't enough numbers, it would not be offered.
Exactly, right.
And that's one of our problems.
Yeah, exactly.
If, if I could respond, oh, no, you, you were next. You know, we as a board have got to decide if we're satisfied with the way things are. And that's no criticism to the staff, but are we satisfied? Are we satisfied with not having kids have the same opportunities in, in AP and those courses, but there are other ones as well? But are we satisfied? Do we take a chance, knowing that what we're doing now, in my opinion, is not good enough? And it may not work. The key there is, the board passes this policy, it's turned over to the administration to take it and run with it, come back to us with a proposal that we'll accept, and so on and so forth, but without giving the staff the opportunity to know that this board is behind equity for all kids, that the kids at J F Webb can take the same AP courses as the kids at South Granville, or so on and so forth, the arts. There are great art teachers out there, I mean, I could go on. My point is, we don't know the answers to a lot of these nuts and bolts questions, nor should we, because it's up to the staff to take what we've got, hopefully put together a major, major committee with partnerships and so on and so forth, to run with it and let their minds go, and come back with something that is not more of the same. Because more of the same will get us exactly where we are now. And once again, that's not a criticism, but we got to think, what's the future going to be like? You talk about Apple, no thing, would they, anyway, I won't go on.
Actually, yeah, so for example, Apple, something else that I just wanted to bring up there, is that Apple in Austin invested in training of high school students to prepare them for jobs at the Apple campus in coding using their SWIFT programming, and Wake Tech has already started offering a four-year program. But Apple is looking at high school students to be able to do that kind of thing. Now, who knows if we have that kind of ability at South Granville alone, because, you know, we might only have like two students that are interested in it, but we may have them at Webb, that they've got like 17 kids that are super into that, and we may have like six at Granville Central. And so being able to pool those resources into one location so that all those students are getting the same rich education and, and opportunity across the board, I mean, it's really, you're doing nothing, you're, that's where you're looking at it for what's in the best interest of the student, not the minutia of, well, this looks really complicated, I'm just not going to vote for it.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I understand where we're going, and conceptually, I'm, I'm following you on this. There are a couple of things that I think we need to think about and consider, because like Mr. Peace said, a plan that you can't implement is not really a plan. I know that we've had executive staff members out of schools being substitutes. So to move sixth grade down to the elementary level, you would have to create two or three teacher teams at every elementary school, which causes an issue with dual certification. It's hard enough now just to recruit teachers and get them in the building. So if you would just consider, consider this as a thought, what if we moved the sixth and seventh grade students to Butler-Stem Middle School and moved the eighth graders to South Granville? You could house the eighth graders on one wing or one hallway, and then you would not have to worry about the dual certification issue with the sixth graders, because they would be at a middle school where they could be on four teacher teams. Just as a thought, because I think. Just as a thought, because I think if we go the path of putting sixth grade back down in elementary school, then you're gonna have to find some teacher who's certified in science and math, and another one who's certified in ELA and social studies. And you're gonna have to create these two to three teacher teams, which I think is gonna be difficult. Or, executive staff, they're gonna have to go out and start teaching some more classes on a regular basis, instead of just seven. So, just something to consider. I know what we're trying to do with moving the kids, I'd like the idea of, I think somebody, you mentioned video conferencing platform. I agree, for those advanced courses, I think trying to bus them to Granville Central is a logistical nightmare, because you have to coordinate scheduling over three high schools, and then there's the busing piece. But if we could utilize video conferencing, so that I can sit at South Granville and take SWIFT coding at Granville Central, then I'm all for that. That sounds like a great opportunity. I do wonder, though, about the principles that, say, a Webb and a South Granville, if all of my AP and advanced course students are leaving me to go to Granville Central and test, then when it's time to get test results, those results reside with Granville Central. Not with South Granville, or Webb.
I don't think the intent is for everything being offered. Being, I mean, if there are enough kids for an AP class of history, absolutely, they take that at their, at their base school. It's just the idea that if you don't get an opportunity, that you have that option. And, um, I don't know about, well, I don't know about the buses, but I do know that, uh, as perhaps the administration and staff look around, that I think they'll find examples of how that's actually being done.
I'd like to make a comment, and then I have a question for you. It, it almost seems like the, the community college way of doing things, which is working, that if a class doesn't have this offered, or enough at this campus, then they are moved to another campus, or we, they, they combine those resources. So, I mean, that, that could be a, a place right there, just to see an example. My question is, is for your, what you just talked about with eighth grade, are you making a substitute motion?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt before you do that? I just wanna note, and I was confirming with staff, elementary licensure covers K six, and then middle school licensure covers six, nine. So, an elementary teacher can teach sixth graders?
Yeah.
Is my, am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Okay.
So were you making a substitute motion?
Well, I, I was hoping that we could have a little bit of discussion around this, before we move forward. Just something to consider, to throw out there, to say, hey, here are a few things that may be sticky points.
Well, and to go along with that, now that we got the licensure thing cleared up, would it be harder on staff to offer electives and opportunities to sixth graders at elementary schools versus offering electives and opportunities to eighth grade students at South Granville, or, or at a high school? Does that make sense to my question?
I have a question about the eighth grader thing. 'Cause I thought that the reason we didn't put eighth grade in with the nine to 12, is because of the SRO issue.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, SROs, we're not crazy about it.
Okay.
The parents weren't either.
But-
I mean, the reason that we stuck with the traditional model, is because of the survey that said, they want more traditional approach. And that was specifically not putting middle schoolers in with high schoolers. So that's, that's the only reason I'm asking, yeah.
Well, I, I just want to go back to what I said earlier. Is that whatever this board do, I don't want the administration staff to leave here shaking their heads, saying, I don't know how in the heck I'm gonna do that. Because that's where the rubber is to roll at. And we need to, I, you know, they sort of don't sit around this table, and I, I appreciate that, really. But, the decisions that we make, we're not gonna carry out any of it. Once it leave, you know, us, it goes to them. So, uh, you know, I would appreciate it, if we, uh, we making decision, if we doing something crazy, one of them raised their hands, and, hey, y'all, y'all doing something crazy. Really.
Yep, I wanna make a comment, when I have any chance. I tell you, my fellow board members, I just listened to 39 people talk the other night. Talking about, you all didn't consider this, or you all didn't consider that, or, you know, and they've laid so many things out. All I'm saying here is, let's not get back into the situation we were in when we met the other night. You know, we have, I said, we have stakeholders. You out there are our stakeholders, as well as this group here, as well as us as board members. You know, I want us to reach consensus, or at least get your input. Now, you know, when we did a survey a couple, few months ago, and we asked you for input with regards to consolidating K, you know, consolidating sixth and seventh graders, seventh and eighth graders, and some of you came back and said, I don't think that's a good idea. You know, what I'm saying is, I want to feel that I am getting consensus from everyone. I don't wanna put anything on the table, and then you all come back with all your emails to me, and come and saying, you all didn't think about this, or why didn't you think about that? And someone said the other night, how about a subcommittee of stakeholders, that you all, you know, then we can talk this stuff through. And, you know, I mentioned it to you, I said, I really liked some of the things she said, but I'm not sure we're gonna go about it that way. I don't think until we make sure we have everybody on board. And I feel we can get the, you know, get our stakeholders on board, to do the right thing, if we focus on doing what's right for our children. And we just need to do that, and not put something on a table, and vote it, and then next week, we got all these emails coming in, saying, you didn't think about this, you didn't think about this, and here we go again. That's all I'm saying.
Ms. LeBrecht, I need to ask Ms. LeBrecht a question. You met with a group of stakeholders, if I remember correctly, a few months ago-
Yes.
-out in Grand Rapids County.
Yes.
What was their thinking on the elementary configuration?
Um, well, they were pleased to have K eight, to be perfectly frank. But K six, anything that keeps their kids in elementary schools longer, is something that they are happier about.
And, I'll go ahead.
I was gonna say, I just, I mean, so, so, I have to say that I'm getting a bit of whiplash from our board members, which is, I'm trying not to take this in a frustrated way. However, only a few months ago, did we not get completely railed about not making a decision. And that we are wasting money, and we are wasting time. And that is why I have taken time to put together this study, because this is not a permanent solution. And I am not saying that we should not have a subcommittee for stakeholders, but I am saying that that needs, that is gonna be a long process, to make sure that we are getting everybody's input, and that we are really, really listening to everything that everybody wants. And I think that there is definitely a place for that. I'm never, I would never say that there isn't. But at the same time, we need to have a plan to move and make some progress, and save some money. I mean, as it stands right now, like, we are just walking back into the black hole that I was frankly afraid this was potentially gonna bring up, if we decided not to go down the route that we had decided on, on November 1st. And so here we are, having a roundtable discussion, picking it apart, trying to put it all together. And I'm, I do not want people to think that, you know, oh, this is my baby, like, I care so much, that, you know, I'm, I'm, my feelings are getting hurt. That is not the case. However, I think that in this plan, I have taken as much as I can from everything that everybody has ever said, at one point, and, and put it into a comprehensive, forward-moving path, to help us to save money in the interim, until we can find out what the numbers say about population. What do our stakeholders really want, in the future, for their kids? And get us to a place where we can move forward. We are, I'm freaking out a little bit right here, because we are just about to end up where we were three months ago, and I'm not, I'm not going there. It's not happening. 'Cause we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna be, the county commissioners are gonna go, oh, look at that board, they still can't make a decision. Awesome.
Well, just about anything we do, it's gonna have some kinks, that's for sure.
Yes.
But I put myself in the place right now of a parent, and I'm thinking about, what do I want to do with my child next year? And, before we can turn around good, people are gonna be making decisions. Do they want to keep their child at their elementary school? Do they want to move them to a different setting, or what? And I think it would be helpful if we made a decision, like you say, it is temporary, and go with it. Now, fifth and sixth grade, um, I had 34 of them in a combination class, so I know you can teach both of them at the same time. But I do know curriculums have changed, but we still have certification issues, even when it's all like, we have it now. So, I guess that's something we'll have to deal with constantly, anyway.
Well, and that's the other thing to take into consideration. The, the sooner that we are able to consolidate, especially in our middle schools, and, you know, take some of that burden off of our teachers, the less we're gonna have executive staff in the classroom. I mean, we need to consolidate, in some fashion. So, I don't know. See, I, and, and that's why I'm prepared to make this, the, um, the motion of moving forward with the temporary solution. Because that's what this is. This is not permanent. This is not permanent.
We, we've got a motion on the floor-
Yeah.
-to, to move forward K six in the high school.
And the reason for that particular motion is that we get off the table now, tonight, this, um, you know, what are we gonna do next year? And I know K six may not work for some people, but I sure know K five isn't enough for some people. And I'm not sure we will ever have a clear mandate to go one way or the other. The one thing about making our schools K six, that we are overlooking is the need for students to help fill our buildings. And in the elementary level, and especially in the northern part of the county. Enrollment is changing, and we need to, um, address that. So, there is no K six, K eight, K seven, K two. There is no good answer one way or the other. And I just think the people deserve to know something concrete, tonight.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think, I mean, I, I hear two things being on the table, really. The one that we've already decided, and that's the rescind, the one that is out there now. That's going to take care of that part of it. Now, the other thing that Ms. LeBrecht talked about, it was like a three-part deal. She had elementary, middle, and high school. Now, the idea that K six, you know, I, my initial concern was the number of sixth graders that we were going to be moving to elementary schools, if we admit that route. And I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I can see having a, uh, K six throughout the entire county. The middle school, I'm concerned about, but I can live with. High school, there's too many ifs, that, you know, we got, right now, five, 10-year plan, and, and I'm, I just can't get my arms around all that, at this point. And, and that's sort of where I am. I mean, if we wanna leave here tonight, knowing with the administration, knowing that there are some things that can be worked on, then I feel like we're moving forward. And I think your motion addressed some of that. But I can't, uh, live with all of that you talked about, basically.
So I have a question about your high school idea.
Yes.
Is that not programa, programmatic anyway? That that's really not our realm?
Right, right.
That that should be the administration to begin with?
Exactly, yeah. We are starting to bar, we're starting to bog ourselves down into the minutia, of which I'm not qualified, and I, I'll be, I'm happy to admit that. I mean, I was, I'm not an education major.
I think they've heard that we want to look for a solution, to be able to offer some advanced courses, and, and there's an idea. I know we have the USDA grant that we received last year, that specifically wraps around teleconferencing equipment, that kinda thing. So, I almost wonder, do we pull the high school part out, because it's not a policy decision? The staff has heard it, they have the freedom to go work on it, with our, they have the expectation that we want something in that. The K six is more of a policy decision. Would just be a question I have.
Um, that's a good question, as far as, as a high school idea. The, the policy part of that would be, that we are proposing a alternative way of, of meeting the needs of all children. The administration takes it from there-
And figures out.
-in terms of details. And, you know, they come back with some ideas. It could be that we may need to implement it a year after, whatever. So, I, it's, it's a chance just to really, um, look at what we're doing, how we're meeting the needs of kids, and what, if anything, we can do to help resolve that. Eventually, I would think, that it would come back to the board for approval. But, I'm, I'm proposing, uh, my thing is that it's a policy thing, related to alternative ways of meeting the needs of children.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, just because there's been a lot of questions about whether to vote on things. So, Dr. Houlihan has made a motion that has two parts, but in one motion. Um, and so that's the motion that's on the floor. There, if anybody wants to make a subsidiary motion to divide it into two votes, you can do that. Or, or you can make a friendly request that he do it, or, but there is such a subsidiary motion that you can ask to divide the original motion into two parts, and consider them separately.
Okay. Alright, is there any further discussion around the motion that's on the floor?
Could you please restate that?
I will. So, Dr. Houlihan is requesting that we move forward with, make sure I get my word incorrect. Have this in here somewhere, right? Alright, um, so, the motion is to move forward with making all elementary schools K six across the entire county, including Intermural Sports League for sixth graders across the district. The motion also includes that we designate Granville Central High School as a nine, 12 enrichment hub, for all students district-wide, to attend their advanced courses and additional electives. And we're allowing the staff to be able to determine how that will occur, is that correct?
Uh, not quite. I think the motion would be, the, that the concept, concept of an enrichment hub, for, at focused at, uh, Granville Central High School, is the motion.
Okay.
Buses, everything else, uh, the, the, um, administration can come back to us and say, hey, we can't get this together, or whatever, but it's just that very small slice of it.
Okay, alright. So, K six across all the, the county, and that, uh, we use the concept of an enrichment center at Granville Central High School, as an idea for the executive staff to work through.
Did your motion include seven, eighth grade?
Uh, we can't do that yet, because of the-
Right, so, as it stands, there would be, but to be clear, that does mean that there would be no sixth graders at Northern Granville or Butler STEM either?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Alright, if you're ready to vote.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand this, for the, for the K six. And you did say across the entire county.
Yes.
So we're talking about all of the elementary schools, um, no matter what district they're in, the north side, south side, and include intramural sports league for sixth graders across the district.
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Okay. Okay.
I guess I probably should've put county, not district.
And then, and then again, that is something that, of course, would be left then to the staff to, yeah, and just like you said, Dr. Houlihan, with regards to the concept for the high school.
Yes.
And this would be the same.
Correct.
Yeah. Is, my question then, just like you said, with as far as the concept, we, we are pretty sure the staff can make this happen. I just don't want, when you went there, see this, first time seeing it, and just like with the high school, uh, that they might come back and say, well, you know, would that be a concept as well? That way, they could look at both and say, hey, we can do this? Or, you know what I'm saying?
I sure do.
Or we're saying, do it, you know, for- Or we're saying, "Do it," you know, versus, "Look at this concept."
Well, it's, it's, it's a policy decision in terms of K-6.
Right.
And that's kind of the board's, board's.
Pervy.
Pervy or responsibility. Now, certainly, it goes without saying that if the staff gets into it and finds some things that, that are, we need to consider.
Right.
I think we have a, a good enough relationship with them that they would come forward.
True.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right. Are you ready to vote? All right, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McKnight?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
It is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it is important to note, it's probably just impacted choice at some of our schools, and we just need to note that.
Can you hear?
Impacted choice.
Yeah, do you want to expound on that? Just, can you, you come to a mic and expound on that? You want me to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Dr. McLean and I were discussing, most of our schools certainly have enough surplus capacity for the current fifth graders to just stay at their school for sixth grade next year. There could be some of our campuses where the capacity might start to get tight, which is a good thing. But let's not forget that many of our students in elementary schools choose to go to those schools. And our, the way our transfer policy reads is that you can only go to a choice program if there is space. So this potentially could impact the, the choice programs without having the, the numbers to dive into specifically. It's just, it's a possibility.
We just did not, we just did not want to not say that right up front, and we may have to bring some adjustment to our transfer policy as it relates to the choice decision.
Absolutely.
We don't know details at this point. Like you said, we've just seen it, but that's something that just comes to mind.
Absolutely.
Because all of our schools are choice schools at this point.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. So just with that new piece of information, I want to start back. Are you still yes?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. McKnight?
I'm going to say yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Houlihan?
Yes.
Mr. Peace?
I want to do elementary stop.
Okay, so the attorney said that there could be a subsidiary motion.
It is too late for that now.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Ms. LeBrecht?
Yes.
All right, I vote yes. It passes seven to zero. All right. Next order of business, would that be the closure study of Holly if you're wanting to, to move middle school?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we proceed with the closure study of G.C. Holly Middle School with the intent on moving the seventh and eighth graders to Butler-Stem Middle School.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. What discussion do you have?
My discussion with regards to that, okay, with the study of, of Holly, with the intent of moving, you know, the seventh and eighth graders and then to Butler-Stem, was C.G. Holly and Butler-Stem. So I understand about the study, you know, and we at first say it just have a study anyway. But with the intent of doing this is basically what, as a result of the study, it can be done based on the cost, 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 and, or if, when the study comes back, there is still, at that point, a decision to be made.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the study will be like it has traditionally been?
Right.
Give you the background information of the school?
Right.
Give you cost comparisons, sizing for what's being proposed? Would there be space to allow for that? Any kind of transportation issues, all of those kind of things? Yes, ma'am. It would follow all that. Then it would have to come back to the board as a draft. We would ask for edits. There would be a final. We'd schedule a public hearing. And then at that point, there would be the opportunity after the public hearing for the board members to make motions related around that school, which could be what Ms. LeBrecht has proposed at that point. And keeping in mind that, again, holiday's probably two months out for a study.
Yeah, I will note that.
Is that fair to say about two months?
Yeah. Some of those things, like presentation of the final study and public hearing, could happen on the same night.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Other questions or discussion? See you none if you're ready to vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McKnight?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Houlihan?
Yes.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Ms. LeBrecht?
Yes.
I vote yes, so that passes seven to zero. Are there other motions to come to the floor tonight related to consolidation? All right. Any further comments, Ms.? What we'll do is go around just real quickly, if you want to make a, a closing kind of comment. Ms. Williams?
I would just like to say, thank everybody for having this hearing. I think with the uncertainty with SWASA and all of the subdivisions, I think the temporary solution is the best solution because we don't have a crystal ball. And if we close something like a high school, it's hard to unclose it. And I think we can continue to think outside of the box and come up with some really good ideas. And I know our staff and administration has that ability, so we're, we're counting on them to do that. Thank you.
Dr. McKnight?
I'd just like to say, I think it's a, this is a, a good stopgap measure, and I appreciate you for putting some thought into this and laying it out for us. But thank you.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, again, I do want to thank everyone with where we're headed, you know, of course, just like Ms. LeBrecht said, you know, we don't want to stand still again or go backwards or, as I've been saying for a while, going around in circles here. But we also want to do the right thing for our students. And I have to admit, you know, when, when the speakers and presenters talked about the mental health of students and what's in the best interest of students, I want to make sure that our stakeholders, our parents, and our community, and everything that, you know, when you came out and talked the other night, you know, it was great because you could tell this was a community effort. And we just want to make everyone feel that they're, they have a community that they need to support, not just on the Crete Moore side, but we have so many more school districts that have, to have that same community effort. And I think we're going to move in this direction, making sure that we hear from everyone, everyone. So I think we're beginning to move that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Houlihan?
Yeah, I want to begin by saying thank you to you, David, for that, I'm sure, difficult decision to rescind the mo, to rescind the, the decision. I know that wasn't easy. I know you were supporting it, but I, I admire the fact that you, you listened to the community. You got their input, and just thank you for doing that. It took a lot of heart, heartburn off the table. And Ms. LeBrecht, you two, for putting this together. It's, we just have been talking in circles for, for whatever, and maybe the timing was right to, to bring this forward. These parents now know that next year, their children will be in K-6 schools, and a decision will be made shortly about middle school, and the decision has been made about high schools. And I think that finally, we, even though it's stopgap, finally, we can hold our heads up and move forward that we have met most of our required obligations. Thank goodness. So, thanks.
Mr. Peace?
Just to thank all of the board members for the hard work that they've, that we've put in to get to where we are, and it's most appreciated.
Ms. LeBrecht?
Thank you to all of you on the board for your support and listening to my ranting and craziness half the time. But also thank you to all of our stakeholders, parents, kids. I'm always so impressed with how articulate our students are whenever they come up and speak. It's not something that I would have ever been comfortable with as a high schooler, so it's always really impressive to me when we have such eloquent speakers at such a young age. And I think this is also a really good lesson for those kids. I mean, so often today in society, we wonder, do we really have power over anything? And so I think we made the right decision in listening to them and showing them that, you know, when you do present a strong case and you do fight for what you want, it does make a difference. So, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the board that just with these decisions, I, I've, I've always kind of come back to, to this point. In a few months, our finance superintendent will be standing in front of us with the budget. And so it'll be hard work for us to make sure that we're ready for that, and it's going to require some belt tightening and some creative thinking. She and I had a conversation yesterday of just how we can think outside of the box to make this work. And so just remember that when budget time comes around. I'd like to thank everyone for the ability that we can come back to the table and make positive moves for our district. I, I have never professed to be the smartest person at any table I've ever sat at, but I know a lot of smart people that sit around tables with me. So being able for us to come together and be able to do that. One of the things that you kind of hit on just a second ago is I think unintended consequences was a word we heard a lot about. One of the unintended consequences of the last month and a half has been a real-life civics lesson for our students and for our parents and for some of us sometimes. And so I'm very thankful to have watched our students and the way they have handled themselves for the most part, and for our educators who have strove in, strived to continue to teach and do well in our classrooms. I just want to thank our executive staff for hanging in there with us and, and being there for every time we have asked for something more. And just thank you. And to our educators, that you have hung in there with us and that we have really wanted to make Granville County the best place it could be. And our educators helped us do that, and families that are sticking with us, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve you and to give us the, the grace and the ability to be able to, to come back to the table and make corrections when we need to and learn things when we hear from you and just to be able to serve you better. Madam Superintendent, is there anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to add and echo what absolutely everyone has said this evening. No matter what district, this has to be the most difficult work of any board, and I commend each and every one of you for coming in here tonight, making some of the toughest decisions that had to be made, so that I can honestly say, this will not be on Monday night's agenda. So.
Yay!
We will actually, on Monday night, get to talk about some other things because it is the holiday season. And while this was most important work, it really is most important work, there are some incredible things still occurring in this school district. So thank you for this, because now that these decisions have been made, it allows this staff and I to take these marching orders and go on and do some work for you. And we're happy to bring the, the decisions, some, some questions, some updates, and work back to you for some additional work from here. To the audience of parents and friends and community members, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for going on this journey. Again, just difficult work. And this community of parents and grandparents and guests and friends, and I have to say, and most importantly, the students. It's just been incredible. Absolutely incredible. You know, the system of democracy is one where everyone has a voice. And one of the things I absolutely enjoy about this process is getting to hear from everyone, but especially our young people, and teaching them how to advocate. So thank you to everyone, but especially our young people. They were wonderful. They were wonderful, and so were each of you. So, Mr. Chair, thank you. I look forward to seeing everyone on Monday evening. We do have a board meeting at 6:00 p.m. Monday evening.
Yes, ma'am. That, that is our next date. Please make sure that you are prepared for that. And with that, if there's nothing else from board members, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Y'all aren't excited, are you?
Thank you, everyone.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion, we adjourn.